Hello.
Hi, Sina.
Hello, how are you?
I'm okay, how are you?
I'm tired. Very tired.
It's a lot, isn't it?
It is. I knew I had hair ties someplace.
Greetings, everyone, greetings.
Hello.
So Brian, you said we should be finished by seven, seven thirty, is that? Did I hear you say that earlier today?
You were just hearing my wishful thinking.
Okay, I gotta do osmosis, I got it.
Oh, I shouldn't be going into the meeting this tired.
Did you, were you up watching some basketball or just one of those days?
Just one of those days.
Yeah.
I was out trying to catch up on some gardening yesterday. And it just proved to me how out of shape I am.
You have a beautiful yard, though.
Thank you, I was cleaning up the, some of the front beds because I realized people walking their dogs weren't quite sure that they were actual flower beds, so.
Yeah, you know, you're in trouble when you see someone walking their dog and they don't have visible plastic bat, you know, it's like.
And I have a dog, so I understand, but, you know, that's why we have the backyard fenced for the dog. But I now have some pink flamingos because I've always wanted pink flamingos.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Rogers, greetings.
How are you, sir?
Good.
How is everyone?
All right.
Waiting to have a great time this afternoon.
We're gonna fulfill your time, for sure. A lot of meaty stuff.
Yeah, it's an interesting agenda.
Yep.
Yeah.
So did I see that you, now meeting on Wednesday night as well?
I'm, I suspect so, I haven't looked that far ahead, that's a whole forty-eight hours.
I'm sure, let me see.
Wednesday is the budget form.
Community, okay.
Yeah.
Kena, how are you?
Sina.
Nina.
No, I'm just saying that the tired part, but we'll make it through. Have a power nap.
Oh, good. May I recommend escape rooms for small groups of pre-teen teenagers for birthdays? It was a very successful birthday party.
I thought maybe you were escaping from the birthday party.
I tried to do that, too. But they were already booked for the other room.
So it looks like we're waiting for Michael. Mr. City Manager, are we ready to go from your end of things?
Yes, I'm looking to see, I just got off the phone with some of the staff and they're probably scurrying to do some assignments before they get on this call. And we're supposed to have a presentation tonight on affordable housing, I think, from a consultant. So I'm looking to see when they come on. Kena, let me know when they come on, right?
Alex is doing the introduction, so whenever Alex is ready.
Okay.
Well, we've, we've got everybody here now, so why don't we call a meeting to order, Ms. Thomas, will you officially call the roll?
Yes, Councilor McGill.
Here.
Councilor Payne.
Here.
Councilor Pinkston.
Here.
Mayor Snuck.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wade.
Here.
Okay, is there a motion to approve or to amend the agenda?
Motion to approve?
For a second?
Second.
Okay, any any discussion, I think it's pretty much what we've been expecting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, the motion passes, we have an agenda. This meeting, as we have been doing all year, will be divided into three main sections. First will be a work session to hear and to discuss a staff presentation. Second, we'll have a closed meeting to discuss various items that we're permitted to discuss in closed session. And third will be the regular city council business meeting, which will begin around six thirty. The six thirty meeting includes a public hearing on the real estate tax rate, as well as a number of development issues and other, other things. But for the agenda, for the four o'clock session here, we have simply a report from HR and A advisors on the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund program review and redesign update. And my little script here tells me that Mr. Icufuna will be introducing the presentation.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Tonight, like the mayor said, we'll be bringing you a follow-up to December twentieth presentation by the consultants. As the city council may know, following the completion of the Affordable Housing Plan and subsequently the comprehensive plan, which was approved by the city council on November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Council, prior to that, council requested that the city staff follow up with additional study regarding the performance of Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund to make sure that the money is intended for the purposes for which it was established, to make sure that it's been run in a cost-effective way and that the city is getting its money's worth from the investment. And the study is also designed to redesign the program, make it more efficient, and then ensure some kind of accountability going forward. On December twentieth, the consultants and staff presented to the city council task one of the contract, which essentially entail program review. And today, what council will be hearing, it's a summary of task one and then a program design, which essentially is task two. And then thirdly, recommendations and the next steps. And the consultant is here with us and he will be making the presentation and subsequent after the presentation, there will be opportunity for questions and answers. So with that in mind, I will ask the consultants to to take the platform. Phil.
Thank you, Alex.
All right.
Good afternoon.
Welcome.
I believe last time we were lucky enough to present, I'm Philip Cashman, partner at HRNA, last time I was lucky enough to present to many of you, but maybe not all of you. It was about one AM. So I'm very excited to be doing this presentation earlier in the day. We'll try not to repeat too much of what we went through last time, we're gonna go through a little bit, as I was just saying, of just a review of how past grants and loans have worked and where they went and how they've been used. If you have questions on that section, please, you know, just ask. Where we know, we'll tell you, where we don't know, we'll go find out and send an email and follow up. And then we're gonna talk a little bit more, be a little bit more forward-facing in this part of the presentation of compared to our last one, on how Charlottesville will be deploying funding going forward. So the process for competitive procurement, grant scoring requirements, how we're communicating, how you're communicating with the public, how much funding you're putting out, how that funding is getting deployed.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Cash, for some reason, sometimes your the audio is kind of choppy, at least on my end, is it, is it just me or is everyone like?
I apologize, I
It's him.
I spilled a drink on this and I'm sorry, you're gonna get to see my forehead very close here. I apologize, no, that's me, I'm trying to get a microphone, I apologize. The second part today, we'll spend most of the time going through is really more somewhat process-y, and I apologize if we get weedy, but we want to be clear because we are working with the city manager to make choices about how money gets put deployed and how to make sure we're reporting on that, how to make sure it's getting, achieving all the goals you all set. So we're gonna get a little weedy on that. And I will hand it over to Callie Seltzer, who's been the project manager of this project and has a better speaker than me and frankly knows more about where we're actually at.
Thank you, Philip, hi, I'm Callie Seltzer, I'm a principal at HRNA. And I don't have the ability to share my screen, so someone can grant me that or just open the deck, that's great, too. Okay. Thank you. So as Philip mentioned, for our agenda today, we're gonna review our past investments. That's task one, here in blue. Task two, under our work, is the program redesign. We'll talk you through what we found in task one and how we have begun working with staff to redesign some programs and then separate, but in parallel, not to be discussed today, is the inclusionary zoning program design, which I believe you all know is underway as well. So we'll just move to slide five, if we can. Thank you. So for our program review, you know, we started with an in-depth review of your documents, so grant agreements in the past, NOFAs, the way, the ways in which the city has solicited partners in your affordable housing deployment. We conducted a lot of interviews and we also verified project information via those interviews and we did follow-up calls with your stakeholders and with your previous grantees. We also collected information related to product delivery and, you know, who owns the property now and who's living there now. We got a limited amount of demographic analysis, but that's included here. And performance as well, so that's our overall approach, happy to explain more, but I think you guys saw this in December, so we'll just move to the next slide if you will. So yes, in summary, you've administered forty-six point seven million in funding. So this is broken down into operating program, development and city administration. And when we say development here, we're talking about new construction and rehab, so specific hard, hard costs related to construction and rehab of affordable housing. I will move on. We've got some slides here just showing how CAF has been concentrated in grants into, you know, which recipients over time, so if you have any anything you want to discuss further here, but you'll see this is your set of recipients. And then in the next slide, you get a little more detail. And we have a full, kind of a full inventory of all this that city staff has now, so you've got the full amount of detail on, we've given money to over the years, how much was that money, what was, what did they say they were gonna do when they received the grant? Did they do it? And, you know, what, what did they fund? And then also some status on, you know, who's, who, what's happening at this property now, do they still own it? Are they living there? So this is just your agencies receiving over two million dollars over that time period. You can see there's six of those and certainly CRHA and PHA won't be a surprise because you've had kind of a a rather large investment in those groups in the past two years, so. Next slide, please. So your average funding level is about three point six million. And in twenty twenty-one, as I, as I mentioned, there's that outlier, right, for Piedmont Housing and CRHA. So this is kind of your, your average with CAF in blue here and then also your other funds administered for CDVG and Home and then the general fund, all of which are, you know, related to housing in this chart. Next slide.
Does that also include the Vibrant Communities Fund as part of the general fund?
Um, I believe the data does include the Vibrant Communities Fund here, but we didn't have records on like those grant agreements for vibrant communities, we just looked at the CAF grant agreements. But the, the dollar amounts here, I believe, includes the Vibrant Communities Fund as well. Thank you, okay, so average kind of per unit basis here, we've just separated out new construction on the left and your rehab and retrofit on the right. Just so you can get a sense of who, who your partners are in this work over the years, how much kind of money and funding, you know, was available and drawing your attention to this idea of cost efficiency. We think it's only one of many important metrics and generally performance in terms of cost efficiency per unit. From what we see in the industry is very good. You are getting a good amount of cost efficiency per unit invested via, via the CAF. Uh, next slide, please. Thank you. As I mentioned earlier, we we don't have a full set of demographic data, it is generally considered pretty onerous to collect that. It's not something that the city has frankly, the, the capacity to be collecting for all investments in the past. Going forward, one of our recommendations is, you know, more, more data collected around demographics of households and the beneficiaries of these programs. But it wasn't something that, you know, was, was really collected for every unit that you've supported over the years. So we did what we could in terms of the four organizations that did have demographic data available, that's who you see here, so PHA, AHIP, Habitat, and then the Down Payment Assistance Program. So they provided, I'd say, a very kind of simple breakdown between black and non-black households. In our, in our mind, that is not, that is not the full picture of demographic data, but we did our best to at least give you some data points about how your funds have been invested and who the beneficiaries are of this money over time. But in going forward, we would like to see demographic data collected that actually breaks down white, black, African-American, you know, depending on sort of like the census divisions there, American Indian, Alaska Native, Asian, Native Hawaiian or other Pacific Islanders. So we want to kind of align that with the federal terminology and make sure you're getting great data there. Going down, please. Thanks. And again, just showing you here some demographic data overlaid with AMI, so that area median income and who's actually being served by your various programs in terms of income. And moving into, any questions on, on that first set of data?
I would just recommend going forward, we also try to collect refugee data. Because we do have a large and extending refugee population. That it would just probably be a good idea if we're collecting demographic data to also start measuring our refugee.
Thank you.
So, so just for clarification, I, I thought, I heard that you said we gave an average of, I don't know, three point two million dollars and then I saw one slide to say in twenty twenty-one, we gave ten point four million dollars to P PHA and Housing Authority, so can you just just recap, because I think it's really important that I understand that as a newbie, where the money is going, you know, because as, we do have a goal of ten, of ten million dollars annually and so if you could just explain that for me once again.
Sure, yes, certainly, that's, that's an outlier in data terms, but Piedmont Housing Alliance was successful in receiving, I think, maybe the first competitive allocation of low-income housing tax credits that Charlottesville has seen in a long time. And that happened in twenty nineteen or twenty twenty. And they've actually received, I think, there were actually two large tax credit projects awarded. And so that was that demanded an additional infusion and commitment from the city of soft dollars, which you brought a lot of equity from the state program in. But there was a big commitment made to support the Friendship Forts public housing redevelopment. And that's where, that's where that investment was made. So I, I wasn't actually involved in this project at that time, but that's my understanding and I believe there's, you know, there was a council decision related to that. Is that helpful?
Yes, thank you.
Sure. Okay, great, so just kind of moving through to, you know, what you learned in this first section and how we're trying to help you redesign and formulate some recommendations here for things like your NOFA process and how do you align your funding with your housing plan priorities? Make sure that you have documentation for monitoring contracting processes that kind of reflect these bigger commitments to affordability, deeper affordability over time and just more dollars in affordable housing expenditures. And so we looked at your overall processes, looked at policy. We looked at the project viability and efficiency. So a full memo will be forthcoming, but we wanted to give you some of our initial initial findings and recommendations. And Philip, I don't know if you want to go through any of the project findings on this section or we can, this is a part we'd love to have discussion around, so I'll kick us off and just, you know, looking at the next slide, please. Starting here with affordability, so, you know, in the past, there's a variety of affordability terms in, in grant agreements, which is very typical and just kind of project dependent. But we, we think there's an opportunity to seek much longer affordability terms aligned out with the housing plan, so really trying to get ninety-nine years of affordability whenever possible. And we are working to kind of help you get the right set of agreements in place with your grantees that get you that longer term of affordability. Twenty years at an absolute minimum would be our, our recommendation there. Sorry, was someone trying to speak? Okay. The other thing we're looking at, you know, city staff have expressed desire to kind of recoup some of these funds from CAF when possible. I think in some cases that will be possible, especially if we are able to structure CAF as a subordinate or a soft loan. Because what that does is you essentially, you're buying that affordability. And if a developer in ten or fifteen years decides, you know, they own the property, they have a covenant, but they're okay to terminate that covenant because they're going to sell the property and make a lot of money when they sell it, it brings you back to the table to renegotiate and say, well, actually, this is a loan, we papered it as a loan and here you are needing to basically, within your sale, we are gonna recoup these funds so that we can reinvest in affordable housing in other ways. You don't have total control over what developers do with the projects that you invest in. These affordability commitments are not ironclad, but generally, we think, you know, that's a a good protection for you to recoup, be able to recoup funds if an affordability period is about to be terminated early.
Is there a way to do that to also add that if this is terminated, that and sold at some point, that not only do we get the initial investment back, but we also get a proportional percentage of the capital gains?
I think, I think that's one way to think about it, I think you can attach an interest rate to say, you know, so, so long as this project is performing as an affordable project available to residents at or below a certain level of income, so long as it is in compliance there. And if the developer wants to sell it and say, we're gonna, you know, the foreclosure and or sale will terminate that covenant, you recoup an interest, like there's an interest, an interest rate that's attached in those original documents and then you're due a bunch of interest. And that sometimes will bring a developer back to the table and say, well, I don't really want to pay this interest penalty, so let me think if I can sell this to a nonprofit instead. A nonprofit that's gonna purchase the property at market. So it's very typical in affordable housing kind of transactions when, you know, someone wants out and the affordability is at risk. So yes, I think there's also potential for, in your in your Down Payment Assistance Program, we do get into this a little bit more, but to, yes, if there's a certain multiple met via a sale and it's no longer being sold to someone who is in the income, the target income range, then, then some of that could be, the city could be a party to an agreement where you get some of that money back as well, in, in the case of homeownership. We lay some of that out in the housing plan, too, I think, yeah.
Um, just because I think that would, one, it's, you know, if we weren't tied, this way we are actually getting back on top of our money, just if it's being, if it gets sold in twenty years.
Yeah.
Um, that the investment that we have put in is beyond, is either stops someone to pause that it wasn't just this free money. It was free money as as long as somebody is actually providing affordable housing.
Totally, yeah, that's what you're buying, this is, that's the public good you're buying and if that's gonna go away, there should be a penalty or some way to recoup those dollars, so we've, we've started to set up some of the grant agreements to look at that, I think there'll be somewhere to do with the city to make sure that those get papered properly early, because it might be a twenty or forty-year, you know, point when this comes due, but it's still, you know, it has to be papered from the beginning.
I just want to draw a distinction and Kelly can hit on it, but it's an important one. For a multifamily rental situation, we're gonna push for ninety-nine years, we're gonna push for the longest period we can, and we're gonna make sure, so that's the covenant, and then the loan document, we're gonna say this is a loan. And in most cases, we would recommend exactly what's later here, that it's deferred interest, that interest is compounding, so as long as it stays affordable, no big deal. They try, in the affordability, then you have a lot more leverage for negotiation. Doesn't mean you'll always win the negotiation, but you have a lot more leverage and if you lose the negotiation, you get money to be redeployed.
What's, I mean, you know what, this is a detail we can talk about later. Sorry, I just hit me that I was starting to get deep into the weeds on this and this is not the time for that, so.
The homeownership piece, though, I think is, what we lay down in the housing plan is that for homeownership, if you all bid down payment assistance for a household and they sold the house and they made a windfall, they would repay the money that the city put in, but they would get the upside because they're building wealth for that household, so we're not we're not splitting, we're not splitting on the upside for a homeowner. Well, some of the people you fund, like the community land trust, their program specifically would be doing that, but overall, the city's position on it was not to do that. Just calling that out because to be, because there's a difference there, what we're talking about.
Well, that brought me to my question slash perhaps more comment is, you know, to me, it would seem to make sense, a lot of sense for us to look at having it be a greater expectation or goal to use the community land trust model more frequently, because that would seem to both ensure long-term affordability and if it's homeownership, provide that opportunity for wealth creation to multiple families. So I would see that just as a big missed opportunity if we're not utilizing that approach in our program.
Currently, we're not, that's not how the homeownership program is set up.
I think that's a major missed opportunity on the city's end. Just my two cents.
Um, why isn't it being set up with land trust?
You can, you can choose to fund a land trust. But if you're not putting a land trust, it's really, and there's a I'm gonna, I can't, sorry, there's a page and I'm gonna talk and flip screens at the same time, so we'll see how well I can do that. It's about it's about balancing wealth creation versus long-term affordability. And so if it's, if you limit the resale to the next household, then you limit the wealth creation for that household who's wealth creation for that household who you're assisting. So it's a low-income or extremely low-income household. They're not going to get the same wealth appreciation that a normal homeowner would get. Now, this is beyond them just repaying the assistance of the city. They would be sharing a piece of the upside, so they actually may potentially, depending on how you draw the split, significantly less money. And there's a real, there's a there is a direct one-to-one tension there. It is, in fact.
We don't need to continue to, because this is a love track, but I would, I would just say, I think maybe the way I think about it is us using it as a middle rung between rental and full homeownership. And if we use it right, people who could otherwise only afford to rent will now be building wealth that will be passed on. So I actually think it generates more wealth creation for the community, not yes, if less if we utilize it right. But I know I'm getting us off track. I apologize.
I just want to say I agree with Michael on that. I actually grew up on a land trust. So I just do feel like it can lead to wealth creation. So.
So I apologize, I apologize. It's not that you can't fund one, it's just that not everything you fund is one. And I will, sorry. Just want to weigh that and speak up. Sorry.
Yeah, no, I just, just for clarification, the reason why it can't create, I mean, no, that that it's a different avenue is because of the requirements of the land ownership, that the land trust own it longer. I'm
Just, yeah, a land trust, which can be run by the residents who own properties, owns the land, but the person owns the house. So it basically, it takes the price of land out of the purchase price of a home. So homeownership becomes a lot more affordable. And then when they sell it, it can go to another family who can have that opportunity for wealth creation. And again, I thought of it as like a middle rung between renting to full homeownership. Because obviously, right now, that gap is just huge to make that leap in our community.
Got it. Thank you.
And we'll put a plug for the housing plan. This was something that was talked about a lot, and if you want to read the whole housing plan, and you make it to page 137, it lays out the trade-offs between wealth building and affordability, just with some examples. There are absolutely ways to balance these things. And I will stop belaboring this because we got lots of spells to cover. I apologize.
That's page 137 of what document? Is that of our affordable housing plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thanks.
No, it's a great conversation and a great model. So take a look at that page, and I think the trick is to figure out how the city, by just having an open solicitation, plugs into a really effective CLT. You don't, you know, you don't control the, the nonprofit themselves, right? So so moving forward, we'll just push, actually, if you don't mind, to the open policy and process questions section. That should be the next next section. Thank you. So here we've laid out for you guys, some areas we think need some more discussion. Starting with, you know, just is the, is the, you know, when will the city make decisions about the amount of funding that's available for affordable housing? We want to see consistent and predictable resource for for your nonprofit partners who operate on a pretty pretty lumpy and lean development pattern, and I won't explain that more here, but consistency is really important. And then also, you know, through what process will you allocate funding to various housing programs? And are you considering actually consolidating all housing funding into a single procurement vehicle? So, you know, from, from the housing plan, you know, we we note that you, it calls for a $10 million, $10 million a year over 10 years to get that kind of consistent predictable resource, and also a funding, a formal commitment to fund through CAF or, you know, the vehicle for affordable housing, if there's more than one. And that there be a clear line in the city's budget for that. So that's something we just think would deserve some conversation here. And then also, how will the city monitor and monitor income targeting and the goals that you've set? That part is easier in terms of publishing metrics and having a lot of transparency about who's being served by these programs. It definitely demands some capacity, some additional capacity. I'd say, you know, housing staff is small for programs of this scale, and frankly, for, you know, kind of big, bad housing problems that your city is facing, that cities of similar size aren't necessarily facing. So thinking about expansion of that capacity as well. So I'll, I'll just leave those questions out there for discussion.
And we have a little bit of a timeline laid out here on the phone side. A big part of this conversation is there's three sets of decisions that have to be made. How much money is being allocated? And there's $10 million talked about in the overall commitment, but not all of that goes in the cap. So there's how much money is committed? Which, which programs, which housing programs is that being put into? And then the third decision point is of the grants or projects or programs that come in, which ones of those are being funded? So how much money? Which programs? And then which actual individual applications are being funded? Those are three, and there's several different actors involved in it. So there's city staff involved in it. You have the CAF advisory committee involved in it, and then obviously, you as the council have the final say on all, almost all decisions. And so we have tried to lay a little bit of this out, but want to talk that through a little bit, make sure we
Yeah. So I just wanted to chime in with some, some newbie questions here. I can get away with this for a few more meetings, I guess, Mr. Mayor. So I guess some of the questions, you know, I have been
I gotta tell you, Juan, you're not fooling anybody.
Okay. So what I would like to know is, are the things that we're doing, you know, looked upon as far as housing and how we're addressing it here? Whether it's in a university town, is it looked upon like as innovative, like other cities and locales, like they're doing something special there in Charlottesville, how they're working with Habitat and PHA and Housing Authority and Land Trust, they're doing some or are we doing some kind of wonky here that, you know, we could really streamline or improve or whatever to get even more efficiencies or even more, because $10 million is a lot, and I understand that's going to put us in the upper echelon, if not top of the list of cities our size as far as resources we're putting towards it. But if we're not doing things efficient, or we could do it better, that's what I'm not, you know, clear, clear on. I guess, you know, if someone could help me out with that.
I'll take a first step. And I think the first thing you said is very important, and it's right. Charlottesville is punching above its weight on a per capita basis. Almost any way you cut the numbers, you all are putting, you are very committed to this public quality priority. So that's the first side of it. In terms of how you're running the programs, you're working with your housing authority, you're partnering with nonprofits. For your size of city, you're pretty sophisticated. There might be one or two other programs you could run, but if you have a local, you have a local voucher program, you have a specialized tax abatement program. These are pretty complicated programs that very few cities your size run. Frankly, very few of our larger cities run some of these programs. So those are, again, I think above, above your, you know, top of, top of class. Processes for administering funds have lagged. You have, your processes for awarding funds and scoring funds and having sufficient capacity to monitor your awards is probably behind where it needs to be. It's just why you all asked this, and why staff have, you know, staff have pointed many of these things out. Your staff is, you know, working hard and aware of this. There's just a lot that's beyond. So part of what we're wanting Charlottesville has a lot of committees and a lot of varying days in public. But it's, the processes aren't as clear and as codified as, as probably appropriate for this much public money. And I don't believe there's a pause. One slide after this, two slides after this, Kelly, that we have a start of the timeline?
Yes, the next slide I think has that timeline. I would just add to that, that you you also have a very sophisticated group of affordable housing developers that I've not seen that level, I've not seen that level of sophistication in the southeast. I think in, you know, Boston, New York, places where you have strong neighborhood-based CDCs with a 30, 40-year history of neighborhood-based action. And that's kind of how I got into community development, like that, that exists. It doesn't exist in the southeast. Primarily, it's development-driven nonprofits like PHA. So you have a really sophisticated set of actors that regionally, you know, bar none. So, yes, I think that that also means you can solve a lot of these housing problems, but you do need the systems on the backend to make sure that when you're putting money into projects, that you're, you've got some deeper monitoring and kind of, you know, ticking off these housing goals that you've set for, for your city. So we believe that's a matter of additional staff capacity, like true additional FTEs, you know, like actually having people that can, can monitor long-term, because some of these covenants, as we're saying, are me 99-year covenant. So it is setting up some internal need for, yeah, for tracking, monitoring.
Um, thank you. Calla, is your name Callahan?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Yes, thank you. So later in the report, do you have in there a suggestion on increased FTEs?
We didn't get specific about FTEs. We have a couple of roles laid out that we think are needed on the monitoring and compliance side. So I think with staff, we could kind of back into some FTEs, but
So, thank you. So, and this is kind of leans into the question Cena had, that I get a lot when I'm just walking in the neighborhoods that that is, you know, I think that a lot of residents are reluctant to, to speak on this, that they feel that they, that it may come out wrong, but many residents of, that have been born and bred here in Charlottesville, if you will, that they feel like they have been trying to get housing for years, and they see, you know, others, maybe from surrounding counties or new to the community, that they will get the houses before they do. And sometimes it's because, you know, maybe they may not have the credit for it, and you know, if you're new here, you don't even have credit. And, you know, of course, now PHA and other programs, they have great programs to work you through that, to address those, but it takes a long time. But I just can tell you, for many residents, it's really frustrating. This is not your issue, but I'm telling you that for a community that's trying to address it, and many a particular community of color and low wealth that's trying to, that's been here working and grinding, and to see someone who's been here many, many years last, get into a house, man, it's very deflating. So I'm just, that's just one of the things that I've heard a lot through the campaign the last 30 years. So it's not anything, you know, it is what it is, but I'm not sure if we can do anything about that, but it's certainly something that I would, as we're writing our policies, that I think that we need, I would like to somehow address, but, you know, do it so that we're still being fair and equitable and legal. So.
I think that the steps you guys have taken to really focus on 30% and below AMI households, and it, that's in, you know, in your housing plan, that's part of how you get it. There are nonprofits that are working with residents to get their credit cleaned up, because bad credit in Charlottesville is practically synonymous with racial exclusion. So there's a lot of a lot of nonprofits doing that work. I think you've got some of the tenants of it laid out in your housing plan for sure. You know, if you want to invest more deeply in an individual household, that's a, that's a policy choice versus reach a lot more units, right? So these are all trades that you guys have to kind of contemplate as you set forth goals for your 10 million.
We, we don't have to belabor it here. We will lay the, we will come back to your old set of recommendations. But the basic process we're looking at, and we have, there's a fair amount of detail to work out, this with staff, is that city staff and the CAF committee go back and forth on production goals and allocation. And then those end up getting, so production goals, like how many units we're trying to get here. We had some goals set in the initial housing plan, but how many units are trying to produce? And then allocation of cost, which different projects that actually types of programs. So down payment assistance versus new multifamily rental versus single-family new construction, and how those are going to add up. And so they really look at those production goals, they have allocations, and they look at the budget, and they you know, staff and the committee come together, that, they make recommendations, and then staff bring the council, set up recommendations, and council gets a chance to say, that's great, but this year we need to, we really need to focus harder on homeownership, so let's move some of that money. Like, you'd like to see some of that money from multifamily rental over to ownership, or there's a great chance to leverage more money from the state, let's move more rentals. You know, maybe council just approves it, but council gets a way in on that. Then from there, city staff actually write the RFP or NOFA, the competitive process for nonprofits and sometimes for profits, but to respond to funding based on that. And they put out that, they go to the competitive process, applications come in. City staff and CAF reviewed this scoring, and we, you know, I guided, we've changed the CAF structure, but it shouldn't be a conflict between anyone submitting funding and on the cap, so they can make recommendations. Then city staff take those recommendations back to council, and council, in most cases, I imagine, would endorse, but may have questions or push back for changes to the endorsement. But that's, that's kind of the process where largely it's city staff working with CAF that are bringing these to your project priorities and production, and then on and then on actual selections. And where this is a pretty significant change is making sure that the NOFA selection process is really driven by the priorities that have been set, and those are clear frankly, well established, so that there can be more of a competitive process, applications can be scored against each other. And that's kind of the process we're setting, the process we're working on here.
Phil, I have to tell you, I didn't hear or understand a single word of the last two minutes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was really trying.
Yeah, I'll just summarize what I think he was trying to say. I think it's important, I'll try to summarize. This proposed timeline is trying to align your processes with those larger federal and state resources that your grantees rely on to leverage these dollars, your local dollars. So you look at the end here, February, city issues, letter of support, provide to grantees. That's really to get a letter in the hands of your nonprofits who are trying to go after the low-income housing tax credit, and that cycle starts in March for Virginia. So we're kind of backing into a schedule that helps them best leverage your local dollars with state and federal money. That, that's, that's the synopsis here, I think.
Well, this is a question to city staff, then, is Mr. Rogers, have you heard from city staff that this feels like an actually achievable timeline with our staff capacity?
Let me ask Sam. You've been working with staff on this directly, Sam. What's your comment on that?
Yeah, it's always been our intention to work with the recommendations that came in. And if we needed to ramp up, we would be able to do that. Keeping in mind that part of my existence here is to also be an extension of a consultant in a way, looking at processes and trying to figure out ways to improve them as well.
So it, it looks like a very definite activity, September through February, to be prepared for issuing letters of support in, in February. With staff to do that.
Yeah. Yes, yes.
Okay, all right. So there you have your answer, Mr. Mayor, it's and counselor. They're ready.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure.
The, the question I have looking at this is, it seems to me that most of the applications for LIHTC programs in the last few years have not come with any assistance from the CAF, but rather from the Capital Improvement Program. And I wonder whether, I wonder what involvement the CAF committee has, has been having with respect to LIHTC applications.
In the past, Mayor Snook, you are right, absolutely right. In the past, a lot of investment the city undertook. We had direct discussion with the city council and the city manager. It never really came through the CAF We had direct discussion with the city council and the city manager. It never really came through the CAF program. You know, so the essence of implementation of the affordable housing plan and the recommendation during, you know, is to ensure that going forward that those funds, we come through the, the CAF cover. You know, I think you raise an important point. And I would like to ask the city council, you know, to to ensure that if you get a letter from a developer regarding funding, you know, I think it would be appropriate for the city council to direct that developer or that letter to the staff. So the staff can coordinate that with the CAF committee. And if, in the wisdom of the city council, the council is looking at funding that, then we can discuss with the developer the, the conditions of the funding, because developer, we need a commitment letter. The letter the city council is just discussing to be issued in February. It's a commitment letter. And under that commitment letter, staff can provide to the city attorney, who we help to draft the commitment letter, all the requirements, the city will be looking at in terms of affordability periods, all the other elements of the the, the commitment letter. You know, we would like to have that channel, you know, of considering a request for funding. And I think the consultant made it pretty clear that it will be better. And the deputy city manager, Mr. Sanders, has indicated that several times that it would be appropriate to channel all funding requests through the affordable housing fund. So that is an important point that you raise. And I hope that the city council will be inclined to follow that direction.
So if we're doing so, is it simply for their advice? Or is it because we will have given them some money that they can, in essence, recommend the spending of? I mean, so far, I I don't know. I I don't know enough about the way that CAF has actually worked to know whether, whether any of these Lytech projects have involved money that has come through CAF. If not, and this is a change that is being proposed, how would we think we would go about doing that as a, as a budgeting matter?
Okay, we will staff will come to the city council. You haven't set up the CAF committee yet. We are coming to the city council with recommendations in terms of restructuring of hack and the creation of the the CAF committee. I believe it's April fourth. What's, what's going to happen is staff is going to discuss with the CAF committee, because one of the roles or responsibility of the CAF committee is twofold. One is setting priorities and then in consultation with the city council. And secondly, distribution of fund. So is that priority setting? That will coordinate with the city council, so the city council can provide direction in terms of are we going to be funding multifamily development, Lytech project this year? Exclusively, are we going to do it in in addition to funding, maybe home improvement or home renovation, down payment assistance. So that's part of the priority setting. Then after that, staff will work with the CAF committee, you know, to prepare NOFA responding to those priority directions that the council provided. So that's how that is going to be working going forward.
Phil, you got your hand up. Is that on purpose? Can't hear you.
Can't hear you.
I think, I think the point is well taken that, you know, running, running the tax credit related investments and through the same process. It is a change and we're suggesting this timeline and that, you know, those high-level priorities and production goals across all your programs get set. You know, with, with city staff in the CAF committee, which is a new committee you're lifting up. And that there's a proposed budget that goes with that. And then if there's enough money to actually designate, you know, different program-specific RFPs, like we really want to run a program focused on, you know, down payment assistance, or we want to, we want to entertain all these proposals for down payment assistance or innovate innovations in land trusts, whatever it might be, that you have the opportunity to do that in that one overarching NOFA solicitation, if that makes sense. I think it depends on how much money is investing, you're investing, because if it's just, you know, you're kind of typical two to three million dollars a year, a single RFP will get you enough proposals to fill that bucket. And certainly tax credit projects will will come your way, because if, if those nonprofits know that there's a resource available that they can get a, a letter essentially for soft subsidy in their hands, they're going to, they're going to apply for city funds and at least take a at least take a crack at it, even if they don't get them.
I have a question, please, for, I guess, Mr. Sanders and Counselor Payne. Maybe this is along the lines of what Mayor Snook was asking. Could you because I'm new to all this, could you sort of help me understand how this has worked, say, over the last several years? So I know we have a hack that makes recommendations. And my understanding is that the hack has basically put forward a number of projects over time. It's really driven by volunteers and also by folks in the development community. And it sounds like, from what I'm being, what I'm hearing tonight is we've, we've made a lot of progress using that. We've gotten a lot of good work done. It's been, it's been successful. But what we want to do now is is elevate this and maybe perhaps the words professionalize it, make it a more ongoing sort of program that we're calling a CAF committee. Is that Deputy City Manager Sanders, is, is that right, what I'm understanding there?
Yes, sir. I mean, it's to also eliminate the various conflicts that have existed over time as well, because when you have one committee that's been evaluating the actual proposals, then that in itself leads to various confusion. So the establishment of the CAF committee is an attempt to pull the developers out of the conversation where they may have a direct benefit. So that there are others that are fully vetting out those proposals and making the recommendations separate and apart from. Then the hack itself can participate in policymaking, analysis, review, recommendations, and it not, and it, and at any point really become a conflict of any kind. And as Alex was describing, this is also a part of a process designed to just try to really put us on a path that all housing-related activities are coming to one single portal. Anyone making a request for a housing investment to the city of Charlottesville should come through one door. That request should be factored against everything else that is being considered. And then it gives us a better ability to track it and meet the compliance variations that, that Callie and Philip has both identified. I mean, that's part of what I've uncovered in my time here as well. And I also just want to point out that we do have another work session on the fourth, focused on affordable housing, where I'm going to bring to light more of the various issues, concerns, conflicts. So you'll be able to process this recommend, this series of recommendations that you're receiving today and how we plan to operationalize those and where there are decision points that need to be made by the group, by, by, by you, actually.
That's, that's extremely helpful. One thing that'd be, I would be grateful for is a flow chart or an org chart or something that, that shows how these things fit together. Is the proposal for the CAF committee, would it belong directly in the city manager's office? Would it belong under N D S? You have any sense about that at this point?
Technically, it already is. The Office of Community Solutions is directly in the city manager's office and this responsibility will be there. We are actually moving the various parts and pieces that have been left in N D S to the Community Solutions Office as well for, again, to be centralized.
And so for this coming budget season, I'm trying to recall from looking through this very thick book that Ms. Hamel has given us. Are you going to have, with this next budget coming up, do you have the F T Es and the staff you need to operationalize this, do you feel like?
There, there is only one position that's currently allocated that is not funded. It is the housing coordinator position. I've actually been reluctant to fill that position because I actually feel as though it needs to be elevated to a housing managers, that we get someone with a higher skill set that's still to be worked out, how to go about doing it. And ideally, we wanted to get this result from H R and A to give us a full picture of the analysis that was in front of us. And then from there, try to determine what the right next step is.
So it doesn't sound like we'll have that person for the next budget cycle, next fiscal year.
I'm not going to say that.
Okay.
There, there's still possibilities.
Okay.
Budget yet, so there's still a chance I could give one.
Understood.
Okay.
One of the key takeaways for me with, as I've looked at the budget since I've come on board is, you know, the need, we, I feel like we run a very lean organization. Y'all run a lean organization, which you know, the taxpayers are grateful for, but we also now they encouraged to see the investments in N D S, for, for example. And I'm, I'm hoping that we can align personnel with, with what looks like a really good plan here.
Sure. I, I can share with you that the original concept of pulling housing neighborhood services and redevelopment into one house and labeling it as the Office of Community Solutions. The thought is that there is way more to go along with that. I have a, a F T E plan for how we can build that out over time. The choice was not to rush to do it, to focus on housing, because that's our crisis. That's where a lot of our money is going. Let's write that part of the ship first. There definitely is more that I can share with you and what the thoughts are. But ideally, compliance is our biggest concern, and that's what we've got to be able to get our arms around for going forward.
Address some of the timeliness issues we've had.
That has been, was been driving me since the day I stepped foot in this.
And I guess the other issue then, would we consider as we're doing this, looking to the, I mean, obviously, we're not even finished with this budget yet, but the idea then of maybe pulling out a section of the vibrant community grant.
You're going into my recommendations now, yes.
Great minds think alike.
Yeah. So I have a quick, quick follow-up. You know, I did my senior thesis way back when I was at Norfolk State with this Norfolk Housing Authority. And we have one here in, in, in the May of change, but then they were essentially the affordable for the city of Norfolk, you know, and I'm sure they had organize, other organizations, but I'm, you know, and so I just want to, when we have the work session on April the fourth, this, I, I like to know a little bit more about our housing authority role in the whole affordable housing scheme and programs that we have here.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
One of the things that I have been hoping that someone would explain or would, would research and then be able to answer for me. They, we were promised this by staff, but I don't know whether H R and A ever realized that staff was promising that they were going to answer these questions for us. So if the answer is, hey, that wasn't what we were actually trying to do, that's fine. But what, what I'm curious about and have been curious about all along is the question of whether our efforts to designate certain number of units to be affordable in a particular in a particular apartment complex. Is that actually happening? Are those units actually getting built and rented? How are we tracking them? Are we tracking them? How does that compare to the folks who say, oh, I'll put X number of dollars into into the affordable housing fund rather than have affordable units in my, in my apartment complex? How is that whole program working? Is that something that you all are able to answer for us?
I was just going to say generally, and I think our memo lays this out, we did not find, we looked at every grant agreement, we looked at every project in the past ten years. We did not find examples where a thing just didn't get built and nothing was, you know, corrected, like the city did recoup, I believe, a loan for one, one piece of property where the project fell through over the years. But by and large, we did not have big findings of, you know, things just not happening that you funded.
The housing inventory that has supposed to been created from S U Ps.
Yeah, just for, for context, that total number of units over the past ten years is something like three until Dairy Central came online. So there's not that many units created from that period anyway.
Yeah, I ju, I just want to add a great point, Councilor Payne. Historically, the developers, they haven't been keen in terms of providing the units, actual units. They prefer to make contribution to the affordable housing fund because it's cheaper for them. And the amount of money that they're contributing in lieu of actual units, it's not enough for the city to actually construct the unit. So historically, there hasn't been a production of units through the S U P or resoning until, I believe, a few years ago, six hundred West Main provided two units and then Dairy Central. You know, also provided about fifteen to twenty units. I think they will start leasing pretty soon. However, the major challenge the city has having at this point is that the, the regulation says eighty percent of AMI, you know, and it's pretty difficult, you know, for those, those folks that are looking for affordable housing to meet their income is inadequate to actually meet that income guideline. A lot of them are below sixty percent AMI, you know, I think that's part of the discussion, the deputy city manager, Mr. Sanders, will be having with the city council, you know, sometime next month. But historically, the developers haven't really been dedicating affordable housing until recently.
Mr. Mayor, were you asking about the total? I, I get the fact about the units, but were you also asking about how much money has actually gone into the fund as well?
I, I would be curious to know that number too. I mean, I, I'm, I, I have never felt that I really understood how this, I mean, we, we end up arguing and sort of sweating blood over things that don't seem to actually happen. When we start talking about so many affordable units per, you know, as the, the density bonus, as the the cost of the density bonus, so to speak. And I, I've always wondered, is this actually happening? Are these units being built? Is the, are we getting money instead? How much money are we getting? And I just, I, I, I just don't know. And I, I was told that this was the kind of thing that was going to be answered in the process of, of this further evaluation from H R and A. Callie just sent us a chat saying maybe not. I don't know.
We would like, oh, sorry, we would like to know the answers for that because it would inform the incentive structure that we're trying to set up for Izzy, but we were not, we were not scoped for that, but definitely can work with you to figure out those numbers. We just looked at the CAF for this analysis, what you've seen.
Well, so the, the money was, is supposed to go into the CAF. How much money came into the CAF from, from that kind of a source?
Yeah, we can, we can, in terms of, you're talking about the contribution to affordable housing fund by developers.
Right. I mean, I, I'll pay a hundred thousand dollars in, rather than having to have affordable units in my, in my apartment complex.
Yeah, we, we, we have that information. You know, we can provide that to, to the city council, including the number of actual units built by developers in recent times. In terms of CAF, you know, I think since two thousand and ten, the city has committed forty-six point seven million dollars to the CAF program.
And how, how has, how has that forty, is it forty-six point seven, as you said?
Yes, sir.
And is that then, does that then include the money that has gone to PHA and to CRHA for redevelopment, things like that?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, so the, the major Okay, so the the major, the major capital funds uh that we've been spending on housing. Are included in that forty six point seven, even though I suspect that the the decisions to do those. Those projects uh were made at a a higher level than the CAF.
Uh, some of the the letter, I don't know, uh, um, several years ago, but in the past, the. Uh, three to four years, yeah. Especially uh with regard to PHA and the Housing Authority.
Okay, but I guess for my clarity, the CAF just is a fund, right? Is there someone that's overseeing or is the hack that oversees the CAF right now?
Yeah, the OCS, Office of Community Solutions, uh, is overseeing it right now.
Okay.
And uh, um, once we create uh. Uh, the CAF Committee, uh, they will be coordinating that with staff. Uh, in the past, Hack. Has been responsible for uh the review. And recommendations related to uh the CAF Fund. Of course, they coordinate that with staff. You know, uh, uh, in terms of reporting to the City Council for approval.
And it's, yeah, and just to add on to that, it's it's a obviously a hack subcommittee that doesn't include beneficiaries of it and. It was many years ago at this point, but they were asked to perform that function, and I think they are. Very open and willing to adjust as it was not their own self-generated idea to have that specific role in the process.
Yeah. Mr. Pinkston asked for a flow chart on all of these actors in in this, and Sam and Alex, I look to you to. To to uh complete that task for us, uh. So the, so we know where the flow of activity is and who's doing what to whom. And 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 for what reason, okay? And the other issue that I hear is, uh, the mayor has asked about, um. You know, the allocation of funds, the forty six point seven million dollars. You know, who's doing the allocating? And what what's the process there? And uh, council ought to be able to see, so there's not any question. About uh whether we are fulfilling our commitments or not.
Mr. Rogers, if we could add to that flow chart also where where the money for the CAF comes from.
Okay.
That way, we're just kind of seeing how it comes in, how it gets allocated and how it goes out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Other councillors have other questions?
I had a note about an earlier slide. There was a timeframe of twenty four months I saw at one point, which. Um, was the recommendation for. Sort of, I guess, how long a project should stay in process in terms of its, I guess, develop. Proposal development kind of funding timeline. I don't know if you can go back to that slide, but um. Just wondering specifically, I mean, two years in some ways seems like a long time in other ways, particularly if you're building. If you're not sort of renovating, but in fact, we're building new buildings, um, new construction, either Habitat or PHA. Uh, I don't expect that would be enough time. And I guess. A major limitation has been, you know, the capacity of our review unit, I I I guess, within NDS to actually. Um, get projects. Reviewed and approved in what people would call a timely manner. Could you speak a little to that? Yeah, the bottom right hand box there.
Sure, so the recommendation here is that you're making investments in projects that are. Uh, going to deliver, if you will, that means lease up within twenty four months. Um, and for a tax, for for a light tech program, uh, there is, for especially larger scale multifamily. Um, there is often an eighteen month construction period. Uh, certainly a smaller scale, ten units can be built faster. Um, but because of kind of the light light tech structure and needing to secure credits, bring investors in, there's a. A long but predictable uh on-ramp for that project delivery. Uh, and a lot of certifications, uh, including like IRS certifications along the way to make sure that. The investors are also, um, you know, cleared with um. Their uh their tax credit. That's the that all hinges on their tax credit. So. Yes, I I think that that's what this twenty four months is, um, and this is really just speaking to, you know. You want to entertain projects that are are real and going to create units within two years. There can be exceptions to that, certainly like early acquisition funding or, um, you know, funding you do for like land trusts. Um, there's a lot of holding costs associated with acquisition, um, and and holding land if you don't have kind of a development uh plan. Um, and so we're trying here to kind of discourage prod. Project funding of uh where where there's no development plan. So if you're within that kind of twenty four months and you have kind of these predictable resources like. Tax credits, um, we kind of know what it's gonna look like for for that project to deliver, and you can count on those units within two years. I I'm not sure I'm answering the question. I just wanted to clarify the light.
Yeah, what you're saying is helpful to me, so thank you for that. I I just. Uh, I know that for that sort of timeframe to be doable. Um, our review capacity within the city needs to be, you know, predictable for developers. Um, I know we're making strides to make that happen, and I'm grateful for that, but I think it's something to keep in mind. Um, and I wonder too if that perhaps, um. You know, I don't, I don't, I don't know this space like Councilor Payne does. He's a, he's an expert and a newbie, but. I don't know, for instance, the the difference between, say. Um, Habitat for Humanity, which is working on longer timeframes, I would think, than other developers. You know, I would wanna, I would hope that whenever we get to the point of brass tacks of laying out what we want our plan to be, we'll. We'll be thoughtful and say, well, we want, we recognize that some types of development will take longer, some shorter. And we'll also be realistic about what we can do on our side from the city to actually review projects quickly and expeditiously.
I would just second Pinkston's point and. And add, you know, a lot of our major, most transformative investments in projects like Friendship Court, Public Housing Development. In the county, um, Southwood involve, you know, very intensive resident-led. Um, approach in terms of the design plans, reaching out to the people who live in those communities, and I don't want us to foreclose. The opportunity to um. Have resident engagement in these processes if the timeline is too short.
Yeah, absolutely, and I redep, yes, feel familiar with the social impact protocol that PHA is using. I think. There's, there's a way to encourage resident-led design and, you know, a a real community engagement process and also discourage. Uh, developers, particularly for-profit developers, from using your money to speculate on land for a project that they say they're gonna make affordable. Three, four years from now. Um, I think that's what we're trying to distill here. But yeah, we absolutely hear you that early, um. Early resources are critical for some of your nonprofits because they don't have um deep pockets to. Um, acquire and hold land until they can do the the right thing by the residents.
I should note, uh, Rory Stoltenberg on an email provided a link. To talk about, that shows contributions over time from developers into the the CAF. This takes us up through twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen, I guess. It shows roughly two point one million dollars from from those kinds of sources. Uh, I don't know, I mean, the last one was two twenty eighteen. Uh, I don't know whether there have been any updates since twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. The largest contributors by far were the two big projects on West Main Street, the flats at West Village. And the standard, which between them put in about one point one million dollars, but more than half of the of the money that has been. Uh, put in by by developers as they they spent that rather than than building in, um. The uh affordable units. Other folks have.
It, I'm sorry, the idea that is the money goes into the CAF and then it's reinvested, I guess, that would be ideally what be. Would be happening with that money.
That's correct.
Okay, but and and I guess, though, what what this leads to is if we've, if we've had forty seven million dollars. Go out of the CAF, so to speak, and only two million dollars, let's say it's it's half. Half the size of whatever, let's say it's four million dollars. That's still over forty million dollars. It presumably has come. From the city's CIP or the city's general fund or or something else, and that. That to me uh raises real questions about what the role of the CAF has been. Uh, because my my sense of things is that when the city decides that it's going to uh. To put, you know, to say to to redevelop South First Street, that few million dollars that went into that project. Uh, came from initiatives at at a level higher up than simply the. The housing, uh, simply the the CAF Committee, similarly for um for Friendship Court. I don't know what. CAF or the hack or any but any other group will have, what role they will have had. I'm just aware of of the fact that ultimately the decisions just sort of come to us and they don't come to us from the CAF. They just come to us from staff. And I don't know whether the staff has run everything through. Through the CAF, just again, getting back, I suppose, to the flow chart issue. Uh, I I I'd be real curious to know, A, how it has been working and B. How our experts think it ought to be working.
I can speak to, that is actually the observation that I've had myself, uh, as I pose questions to staff as to how. Do we do all these different things? Because they haven't necessarily um. Check my box on being clear. Ideally, I think that's what we're trying to get to, is to see if we can't structure a a better process for all of these various activities to happen. In a more organized fashion as it relates to affordable housing.
Okay, and Sam, you have told us that our, at our next meeting, we will be having a work session. Where you will make everything clear. Is that correct?
I realize what a big task I have before me, but that is.
We hear you, Sam.
All right, any other questions, any other discussions for our consultants or for ourselves for that matter?
I do think that it's, it's always gonna be something we have to keep in mind to. Vice Mayor Wade's point earlier about, you know, are we doing enough? How do we do? How does what we do compare to? The cohort cities, um, how we. How does what we do compared, you know, within the regional southeast as Cala had mentioned a minute ago? Um. I think that's important. I don't know that would ever be a right answer. Um, you know, really speaks to our values. There's lots of other things we have commitments to, including the schools, but the one thing that I would just. State, um, you know, that the Affordable Housing Plan that was endorsed by the prior council called for ten million dollars a year, it. Basically said seven million, and Mr. Payne, you can help me if I'm getting this wrong, but. Roughly seven million to direct subsidy, two million um to, uh, no, yeah. Seven million for projects, basically, two million for uh subsidies and then or rent relief and things like that, and a million to. Um, to staff, yeah. And when I, when I posed that to folks in the development community. They were like, oh, well, we think that the actual amount we invest in projects should be greater than seven. It should be more like nine or something. Which, you know, is not surprising, but I think it does speak to the fact that people uh use these numbers in different ways, and I think it's important to be. Clear on on what we're spending our money on and, you know, what part of affordable housing. It's, it's good for me as a person who was elected on, one of the things that I spoke about when I was running was the need for housing and. I want to be able to say, uh, yeah, we've, we've met these commitments. On the other hand. Uh, there's more work to be done, and I I think that there will always be appetite in this community. Um, to err, as it were, on the side of spending more on direct subsidy if we can. Thank you.
I would just um. Add in the conversation about the CAF, I would see the ideal role is it just being a more flexible pool of money? That is both the pool of money we can use for low-income housing tax credit development in the city, as well as potentially for any um. Strategic opportunities that we didn't anticipate that we could take quicker action on. And the final thought, you know, I definitely agree, we need to move towards a more um systemic and strategic approach. To implementing housing and um, I think really the critical piece of that is. Us being more strategic and planning long-term about land acquisition. I think because we have limited land and the housing market is so hot, um. Every time, you know, we miss an opportunity for land acquisition is potentially, you know, a permanent missed opportunity and. Think if we can be strategic about that, um, we could start to really make a bigger difference, even if. Affordable housing couldn't immediately build, be built. We know that that land. Could be used for that purpose down the road, um, and so I just hope we're able to be. A lot more strategic about that and think about how that could incorporate. Land trust, the Housing Authority and and potentially a land bank, which is something that Richmond, Virginia and other cities have done.
Now, I noticed that we just recently got page twenty of the presentation up. Are there more pages that we cut you short of? Or is that it?
I think the other pages were prompts for exactly a discussion we just had, um, so we're good. Um, we will just point you to the last slide, which are, is our next steps. Uh, if we can move it, there we go. Um, so some of the. Items we're working through are revising your overall NOFA um program, like RFP structure specifically, so if you. Um, want to be opportunistic about acquisitions, that you can have a slightly, uh, you know, a more bespoke uh set of criteria for looking at acquisitions, that you're not just gauging that. Against light tech, which is gonna, it's the apples and oranges. Um, and rewriting guidelines and evaluation criteria, criteria, application forms. Um, that all kind of sync up your housing plan and in that overall structure. Um, so we're also, you know, seeking city councils uh confirmation uh on this kind of revision and approach. Um, certainly working with um, uh, Deputy City Manager on that, um, and then we intend to host, uh. Or city will host uh some updates to convene um. Interested applicants, help them understand new processes of the NOFA and funding allocations going forward. Um, and then also issuance of these kind of compliance and technical assistance guidelines. Um, so that your program applicants at the time that they actually apply for these dollars know that that it comes with um some requirements to track data like demographic data. So you guys actually have a a long, you know, longitudinal set of information about who who programs are supporting, so. Um, those are just some of uh what we're working through with staff, and um I won't take up any more of your time, but we. Sincerely appreciate all of your feedback and questions today and uh look forward to to further refining.
Thank you very much for the work.
Yeah, thank you. It was very helpful. I'd love to get a copy of these slides if I could.
Absolutely, we'll, we'll share one.
Great, thank you. Okay. That's our agenda for the first part of our meeting, unless, unless, Mr. Rogers, there's anything from the staff, should we, uh?
This is what we came to do today, Mr. Mayor, so. I uh, we can move on to the next one.
All right, so the next portion is our closed session. Uh, do we have a motion to go into closed session? Let's see.
I have it. Hold on, let me pull it up. Um, pursuant to section two point two dash three seven one two of the Virginia Code. I hereby move that the City Council close this open meeting. And convene within a closed meeting as authorized by Virginia sex code section. Two point two dash three seven one one A one for consideration of prospective candidates for appointment by council to city boards and commissions.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes. We will now go into closed session. We will be coming back to a separate Zoom link for the open meeting at six thirty, and I guess, uh. Do we have? Do we have the closed link? Ms. Thomas?
Kena sent it out, um, and then I know I have it in my calendar.
Right, you should see it in your calendar.
Yeah, that's why I have mine.
I see it. Okay, great. All right, so we, we will recess at this point and see you all on the other side.
Okay, thank you, sir.